All right, I'd like to call and order our board meeting for tonight. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. Adequate notice has been provided. Scheduled meetings have been posted. It was adopted, sorry, at the organization meeting in January 7th, 2025. Scheduled notice of meetings has been posted and are maintained at the interior window of the exterior door of the school administrative offices. Mail to the retrospect and courier post and filed with the clerk of the Oakland Borough. All foregoing has been done within the time required by law in accordance with the Public Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231. And roll call for attendance.
Mr. DeMarco?
Here.
Mrs. Papel?
Here.
Mrs. Love?
Here.
Mrs. Marmian?
Here.
Mr. McMillan?
Here.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Here.
Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Stotts?
Here.
Mr. Tabey?
Here.
Please stand for a Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
All right, we have no executive session at this time, so we'll be moving on to our presentations for tonight, starting out with our Hawk Heroes.
So tonight, we are honoring our Students of the Month, which are Hawk Heroes of the Month, and our Hawk Heroes of this month are being recognized for being very hardworking students. So, we do define hardworking at OPS as putting effort and time into learning and reaching goals even when it's challenging. Hardworking students are prepared, participate in class, use their time wisely, try their best, understand that the stakes are learning opportunities, and persevere through challenges. So, let's turn this way. These are the ones who are getting the awards. Our first Hawk Hero, Liam Thrust, come on up. Hey Liam, what are you talking about? I'm against it here. Your teacher says that you are always participating in class, discussing, answering questions, and putting your best effort forward. You want to do well, and your motivation shines in your work. Great job Liam, Miss Koshi. Okay, next, Kanan Stanley. There's your award. He is an excellent role model for his classmates. Keep up the great work, Kanan. Mrs. Morton.
We're going up in grade level if you haven't noticed.
Yeah, these guys will be careful next month not to win it again.
All right. Isabella Monta, come on up. Otherwise known as Izzy, Izzy puts her best foot forward each day in class. She participates, she is helpful, and she is kind. She always asks for help whenever she needs it, and she sets a great example, great example of hard work in room 204. Way to go Izzy, Mrs. Goodman. Juniper First, come on up. Juniper First, otherwise known as Junie. Junie is motivated and is always giving her best effort in class. She participates, she works hard, and she is committed to being successful. She is a great example of hard worker, awesome job, Junie, Mrs. Wuhan. Emma Baker. Emma is always participating and working hard in class. She is a conscientious worker who always strives to do her best and to be successful. Great job Emma, Mrs. Collins. Last but not least, our fifth grade Hawk, Sophia O'Neil. Sophia works hard in all of her classes. She continues to persevere, and she doesn't let anything affect her desire to succeed academically. Mr. Widenstein. Congratulations to all of our Hawk Hero winners, our very first ever Hawk Hero Students of the Month. Great job.
What an amazing, this made my day. So, thank you, and congratulations to all our Hawk Heroes. First ones ever, very cool. All right, moving on with our presentations, what do we have next? Are we jumping right to the district testing report, right? Or do we need to go through each one?
Let's do the SSDS first, that'll be real short.
Oh, gee, I missed that, okay. Next, our SSDS report for period two.
So this SSDS report is actually for last January through June. I can report that we had four confirmed HIV reports by the end of last year, three alleged that did not meet the definition that we also investigated, zero incidents leading to removal, and eight restraints total for the year. Reporting our programs, in February, we had our Friendship and Kindness Week. March, we did Read Across America. Again, some in March, SEL Week, Moral Diversity Week, and in June, we ended our second half of the semester, SEL and Hawk Character Traits Months. So, a lot going on for the programs, and then there were no extra trainings because the trainings happen in the beginning of the year. And excuse me, I am getting sick, so I'm a little hoarse, and I'm choking over my head. We're here. Any questions about the SSDS report? Thank you.
Can I interrupt real quick and see if we get a mic check on that? I don't, I don't think we, I don't think the mic's on there.
It can be heard at home.
Is Patrick?
You confirm that?
Sir, switch, it says off on.
Because like when he spoke, I heard the speaker. There.
Now, we're moving on to our district test report. Dr. Walker, welcome.
You're just going to, due to the number of papers that I have with my house eyes, I'm so.
This one?
Yes, please, I think that should work.
I'm actually going to put this on the other side. I know, I'm writing from the, does this have any give? Okay. Yes. Thank you for your patience. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, families and community. Can you hear me? I don't feel like I'm in the mic, but you can hear me? Okay, yeah, okay. So, I will go with that. I will try to enunciate and articulate and project so that both you and anybody who's viewing online is able to hear as well as to see. Again, good evening, I'm Dr. Dana Walker, Special Assistant for School Improvement, Performance, and Accountability. This evening, this evening, I will share the district test reporting data from the spring of 2025. Annually, as many people know, we're required as a district, in addition to sending the data home to families, we also present it to the board and also present it to the community. So this fits within the regulations and requirements. As you can see on the agenda, there are a number of reports that I will share with you this evening. Some of the reports will be just general FYI, as we do not necessarily have all of that data here in Oakland. I'll give you a brief overview of access, DLM, and the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments, which is NJSLA affectionately. I'll also go through disaggregating the data, which is also a part of the requirement. One of the core pieces is to ensure that all students are accounted for and that we are responsible for sharing that data. Before I get to the access, please know that in the state of New Jersey, there is a suppression law to protect the identity of students. So if you're under 10 for the sample size for any particular assessment, we do not publicly report on those numbers. So important, so this evening, there will be some areas that I cannot report due to this ruling. For instance, the access test, just for your information, follows along with the WEATA standards. It is for our multilingual learners. ML is the new acronym that you'll hear for probably about the last two or three years, formerly known as English Language Learners. A lot of times, capital E, capital L are Ls. Here in Oakland, we do not have the minimum number in order to share the data with you. I did just want you to be aware of the access test because we do have some students who test. Access is assessed in four domains, speaking, listening, reading, and writing. The goal is to ensure that students have enough English in order to participate in general classroom instruction. We do have some research here at the bottom, realizing that it does take between five to seven years for students to become proficient enough, and of course, that's general, and we do try to accelerate our students to the best of our ability. Again, for your overall understanding as a board and as a community, access is rated on six points, beginning with entering, level two, emerging, level three, developing, level four, expanding, level five, bridging, and level six, reaching. In order for students to exit, if you will, from receiving individual services, they would need a 4.5, so we're looking for somewhere between the expanding and bridging in order for students to be deemed eligible to be successful without that additional teacher. The WEATA standards are written as can-do descriptors. I personally do like that language, and again, we're looking for what are students able to do in order to be successful. This is sensitive. The second assessment that I also am unable to report on this evening due to the low number here is the Dynamic Learning Maps, known as DLM. The DLM is when students are exempt from the NJSLA, so we have students with IEPs. Usually in districts, it's 1% or less than students who are eligible for the DLM. We are under that number, and we are under 10 total here in our school district, so I did want you to know for your own information, students do have ELA, mathematics, and science for the DLM, if in fact, they are exempt from the New Jersey Student Learning Standard Assessment. Okay, so now we'll get more into the data that I am able to share. It's the NJSLA, New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. NJSLA begins in third grade and proceeds through high school. The variations are different in high school, especially when you get into the mathematics classes and science classes. I realize here, we are stopping with fifth grade. We have also, science is tested in fifth grade, eighth grade, and 11th grade, so I'll start with the science data for New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. The New Jersey Student Learning Assessment for science is actually on four levels. The other assessments are on five levels. Level one is below proficient, level two, near proficient, level three, proficient, and level four, advanced proficient. This chart shows us a three-year trend for our fifth graders here. You will notice that last year, in the spring of 2025, we actually saw an increase in science for our fifth grade students. Also with the asterisk, we've noted that we actually outperformed the state average. Science is known to be an assessment that throughout the state, we are working with our students with their learning of science and the concepts and skills, because as you can see, the state average is 30.1% for grade five. Our average here in Oakland is 33.3% last year. So we are happy that that increase did take place. As we look at the disaggregated data, by gender, we're required to share information with the public. Of those fifth grade students, our female students, 18.2% met or exceeded proficiency, and 50% of the male students. That 50% of the male students, we want to note, does capture a 25% increase over the last grade of fifth graders who tested for science. So that is a glow. Data is also shared according to ethnicity and race. Due to the low number, we're unable to publicly report on our Hispanic, or our black students. However, our white students in grade five did score with 34.4% of them meeting or exceeding That is a 5.4% increase over the year before for that subgroup. Economic status is another area of disaggregation throughout the state. We have 16.7% of our students who are economically disadvantaged, meeting or exceeding that fifth grade science standard, and 40% of our students who are not economically disadvantaged in that fifth grade cohort. That was an 11% increase for our non-economically disadvantaged students. I will skip that one due to suppression. NJSLA for language arts and for mathematics. I did mention that there are five levels when you move into language arts and mathematics. We're looking for students, as you can see, to be at level four or level five, meeting or exceeding expectations. This table captures our three-year longitudinal data for Oakland and also compared to the state of New Jersey on the same slide. Last year, our third graders in ELA, English Language Arts, scored 25% proficient compared to the state 44.9%. Our fourth graders scored at 56.3%, which exceeded the state average, which was 53.5%. And our fifth graders, 63.4% of them met or exceeded expectations, and the state average was 52.8%.
Question for, on the 24 and 23 years, is that Oakland numbers or is that state numbers?
Oakland.
So we dropped from 59.4% to 25%?
It's a different class, different cohort kids. Different kids.
Well, they're, yeah, they're different kids, okay. So we dropped from 59.4 to 56.3.
This is their, that, third graders is the first time they're taking that. Right, that's.
No, you're, 2024, the percentage, 59% are the third graders. Those kids are now fourth graders.
Yes.
And the fourth grade is 56.3%, so it dropped 3%.
You're correct. I was just adding on, yeah, because you have to look at it as a diagram, I was adding on that for the third graders is the first time, there's no comparison, obviously. This is the first time they're taking it. We will also talk about strategies that are transpiring. Do you have, I heard you say, um, is there, I don't want to stop if you have another question.
Well, I'm looking at the percentages, 23, it was 50%, 24, it was 59%, and 25, it's 25%, and admitted they're, they're different kids, but that's one heck of a difference.
But it's also the cohort of kids, right? So the fifth graders were in 2004, like, two years ago, were the third graders.
Yes.
So, you're also looking at a particular group of kids. So, it could also depend on the cohort of kids and what's happening in that particular grade, right?
I understand that. But in 24, we were able to get 59.1% of the kids proficient, or whichever one of the class applications goes in. Different kids, but in the same class, same grade, this year, we're only able to get 25%.
So I'm saying the elephant in the room is, those are the kids that spent COVID learning anything regarding reading, letters. They were in preschool during, when they were not in school, when they couldn't be here. They learned all of that on Zoom with incredible teachers. I have one at home, not a teacher, a third grader, a third grader at home, but, yeah, so that's, that's the elephant in the room. I'm sure we might hear a little more about that, maybe, but that's something to keep in mind. I have a different perspective on that, though, just even, like, I think that the third grade scores are the actual first class of kids that were starting to rebound from COVID. You weren't, like, those kids were three and four years old, or four years old. I would offer that the fifth graders, who had 63%, suffered more from COVID because they were going in the first grade, and they rebounded nicely. So I still, I, I don't know, no, that's fine, you can, but I'm just saying, I know. It's harder to rebound if you missed it in first grade than pre-K, but in general, the 25% is just, it's an anomaly, and I think that it's easy out to say it was the COVID grade, but it, they got the, they had the same teachers. I don't blame the teachers, I don't blame the instruction, it's just, it's just an anomaly. I don't know what happened with them. But I don't also want to say those were the COVID kids, because fourth and fifth grade would have had it as impacting or worse.
So let, so let me, let me, let me hop in, because we've got a lot of data that we want to cover, and we do want to have a much bigger discussion about this, and so, but for the folks that are watching, the piece that I would like just to highlight is to celebrate, our focus post-pandemic was growth. It was not status, it was growth, because we knew that we had children that were coming back that had gaps. We knew that there were children that were coming back who were dysregulated, and so from our perspective, when we look at our acceleration strategy, if you look at the fifth grade cohort, you see steady, three years of steady growth. Yes, that growth for that particular cohort also translates into increase in status. And so, I think that, yes, we can talk about what were some of the contributing factors, but when we're looking at different cohorts of kids, some of our cohorts of kids are going to come in exceptionally high, some of them are not going to come in exceptionally high, but what we do have is we have dedicated and committed staff that have already demonstrated their ability to catch kids up and accelerate them no matter where they start.
Agreed, yeah, that's, you know, and that's not my point. I can, I can see the numbers, 23 went from 50 to 56 to 63 for the same cohort, the same group of kids, and that's terrific, that's gone the right way. I'm just saying that the 25% for this one year, for this first group, and it's the first time they've taken a test, but the other percentages were the first time those kids had taken a test too. And I'm saying that the 25% looks like something's wrong. I'm, I'm sorry.
May I add one more point from a personal perspective, and I, we can all, we all had different perspectives of COVID, right? Whether we had kids at home or didn't, what ages they were. We're not talking about March to June of 2020, which, if you were a working parent, a two working parent family, and your daycare shut down, that was a big loss. That was a huge loss, because our daycare was not, those were teachers, they were not in our district. She was, my daughter was not in the pre-K here, she was three, but she was learning letters, she was learning all of the things, all of my kids went through the same thing. So, I'm not comparing, and I, and I hear that Jen had, has a different perspective, and I, I'm not an expert here, that's not my job here, but I'm saying, there were, it is, it's not responsible, I don't think, to ignore that there was a huge disruption at the very start of learning. If you went through kindergarten, they had a full kindergarten year, you had a base. That's my, that's, I just want us to keep that in mind. I don't think we've fallen off the cliff in teaching this one cohort of kids. And I'd be curious also to know the data of other kids in this exact age cohort in our area, across the state. I mean, I'm seeing the state average is higher, obvious, much higher, but it's lower than the other. The state average is lower across three, four, five. Three is the lowest, so just bringing up that point. The next slide captures disaggregation. Again, we're looking at the English Language Arts Assessment. We have the data for our third, fourth, and fifth grade students by male and female. Our third grade female students, the group we were just talking about, 26.1% met or exceeded standards. Males, 23.5%. In fourth grade, 50% of the females met the standard, and 64.3% of the males met the standard, and in fifth grade, 61.9% of our students met the standard who were girls, and 65% who were males. That fifth grade male group does show an increase of 7% of that subgroup of students. As stated previously, we are able to share data on our white students. In third grade, 24.2%, in fourth grade, 69.6%, and in fifth grade, 65.6% met or exceeded By economic status, here we look at economically disadvantaged versus not economically disadvantaged. By economic status, here we look at economically disadvantaged versus not economically disadvantaged. 20% of our economically disadvantaged students met or exceeded the standard in grade three. 28% of our non-economically disadvantaged students for the same grade. In fourth grade, we had 30% of our economically disadvantaged students who were proficient. And 68.2% of our students who were not economically disadvantaged in fourth grade met or exceeded the standard. And in fifth grade, 41.7% of our economically disadvantaged students met the standard, and 72.4% who were not economically disadvantaged met or exceeded the standard. Grade four, for the students who are not economically disadvantaged, that represents a 6.2% increase over the prior grade. And in fifth grade, there was a 5.4% increase for the students who are not economically disadvantaged. And that was the growth there. And lastly, our students who are, who have an IEP are not captured here. However, we're able to share the data on students who do not have an IEP. 29%, 66.7%, and 67.6%, respectively. Finally, we'll take a look at the math scores from spring 2025. Again, this table does capture a three-year longitudinal snapshot, if you will, of our students here. In 2025, our third graders, we had 32.5% meet or exceed the standards. Our fourth graders, there were 25% who met or exceeded the standards. And fifth grade, 53.7% met or exceeded the standards. Our fifth grade students here are students who exceeded the state average by 18.4%. The third grade does also show an increase here in Oakland of 7.5%. So we did have a bit of a conversation about third grade. So in this area, as we move over from ELA to math, those students did perform higher than they did on the reading portion of the NJSLA. I will say, since there's a little bit of a conversation at the table about math, for math, last year here in Oakland, we also piloted the math assessment and used that as a universal screener. So in conversations with building leadership and with their team, we talked about how using that data that they, you know, were able to extrapolate during the second half of the year helped to prepare the students. The next slide captures the disaggregation by gender. I'll give you a moment to look at that. For third grade, the girls, 26.1%. Again, this is the area of mathematics. The boys, 41.2% met or exceeded the standards. In fourth grade, 27.8% of the girls met or exceeded the standards, 21.4% of the boys. And in fifth grade, 47.6% of the girls met or exceeded the standards, and 60% of the boys. The highlights here, the females, there was an increase of 21, excuse me, there was an increase of 2.1% in third grade of the girls, and 14.2% of the boys over the prior year. Again, in third grade, the females, there was an increase of 2.1%, and in third grade, the male increase was 14.2%. In fourth grade, the females, there was an increase of 5.8%. And the females in fifth grade, there was an increase of 14.6%. And the boys in fifth grade, there was an increase of 23%.
Dr. Walker, can you pause for just a moment? Questions, takeaways from what you just heard?
I should probably know this and remember this, but I don't. What defines economically disadvantaged?
Free and reduced lunch. Free and reduced lunch.
That's what I thought, okay.
So I want to, I want to make sure that we are putting these numbers in the appropriate context. And so, expected growth over time, year for year, is two and a half percentage points. And so, I just would like to highlight and publicly thank our staff. Some of the numbers, Dr. Walker, can you share those, that last set of numbers that you just shared in terms of the growth year over year?
Yes. Female students in grade three, there was an increase of 2.1%. In grade three, for the male students, there was an increase of 14.2%. Fourth grade female students, there was an increase of 5.8%. And fifth grade, there was a female increase of 14.6%. And the males, there was an increase of 23%.
Okay. So I'm going to share again, expected growth over time is 2.5%. And so, 14.2, 5.8, 14.6, and 23 is statistically significant, and we're seeing growth in Oakland that is triple and quadruple what the expected growth is based on the targeted efforts that are happening within our schools, specifically as it relates with math. And so, if you recall, this time last year, we were asking ourselves questions about why were we not seeing the growth and the improvements in math? And so, we all went back to the drawing board. The team implemented, looking at the universal screeners, they added additional time specifically in grade five in order to make sure that students were going to be more appropriately prepared for the rigors and demands of middle school, specifically those that were interested in the accelerated pathway. And these types of numbers are nothing short of phenomenal. And so, I don't want us to get lost in the numbers and not acknowledge the collective efforts of our staff and our students who did the lion's share of this lift.
Can I ask a question? I totally agree. I totally, totally agree. I'm, I want to make sure I heard you right, that there was a big effort for grade five, which we, I want to make sure I'm reading this right. So we saw them go 35, 28.2 in math, to 53.7, which is incredible. So, I mean, that's a testament. Unfortunately, it looks like fourth stayed where there wasn't growth, right? So, you know, would love to hear what the strategy will be going forward, but that, obviously, that strategy worked. It's great.
I can just chime in, too, on that, on that point. And Ms. Baldwin, correct me if I'm wrong, fifth grade, last year was one of the changes, or that, fifth grade was departmentalized, and we brought that down to fourth grade as well. So, you know, as those skills become more complex, particularly for math, you know, the hope would be that we would see the same type of growth for fourth grade, being that teachers only have one content area to focus on in terms of planning and data review as well. So that fourth grade piece is new this year.
That word, no growth, kind of eats at me a little bit, because you're not seeing that where they were in third grade, maybe being well below, that they grew to be approaching, which is right on the line of almost proficient, they just didn't quite make it. So we might not be getting them there to third to fourth, but we're seeing that light bulb and everything fall into place come fifth grade. So it's not that they didn't show growth individually, it's that we didn't get over that proficient mark to push enough students over that bubble to show in the state numbers. But when you look at individual student growth, we're seeing individual student growth.
So with that, do we look at the data to say if the average, like, score-wise? Because you're excluding the two that became a three, or the one that became a two. Do you guys, maybe not in this forum, look at, well, the average score was 180, and now it's, but that way, it's kind of taken everything in the consideration, all five levels as a whole? Okay.
We can look at the report even more closely when we take our math assessments that shows that kids are on the bubble. And I will say, a majority of the white kids are not well below, they're approaching. We have a huge percentage that are right here, and we just have to shoot them all the way that mine is, and we're not that far behind.
I appreciate you adding that, because I think it's really easy to overlook that fact. It's actually more than, more than likely, this is an opinion, it's anecdotal, harder to get a kid from a four to a five than a one, two, even a three. Like, you know, it's law of diminishing returns at some point. Like, if you're already really, really close, then you're probably not going to get that much more with extra effort. But if you give extra effort to those kids, they have a ton of opportunity, you might be able to push that average so much more. But, so I appreciate you adding that. I think that's important, and we should unminimize that type of gain.
I, I just want to repeat it, because I don't know if it was heard. So, maybe Jen, would you like to just repeat the, because it wasn't on mic? What Ms. Baldwin's, no, no, you were, Ms. Baldwin's point, but I think, because again, I didn't want it to make, to sound like I was saying, oh, this grade is stagnant. I was just pointing out numbers, but I think it's a really important point.
So what, the, the point was raised, tell me how, if I do well, that the word no growth bums her out a little bit, because when she looks at it, there are so many kids that grew, but they were like, at the very tippy-top of approaching, which, so they didn't get to met. So they're not reflected on this slide, but the growth was there, and so it's hard to say that there was no growth, it's just not represented in this slideshow. All right? Thank you.
And I will just add, and then someone can recap on the mic or on...
And you can.
I'm greater than you. It's okay. You know, the way that this data asks us to break down these, these data points, I think makes me want to add in a couple of things here.
But why don't... Because she's wanting...
More of us need to learn, like, science, we could just sign it at the table here.
Good evening. The way that this data asks us to break down the data in these slides is the way that we are presenting them tonight, but makes me want to call out a couple of things. Number one, this is an 8% school-wide increase from the 22, 23 math outcome to the 23, 24. So as Dr. McDowell was sharing a few moments ago, that is about three times the expected rate of growth that we would see in one year. You, you all know that, like Fred said, at this time last year, it was a really clear charge and emphasis to rapidly grow math outcomes. We see that reflected here. And, second, you know, and at the conclusion of this conversation and presentation, we'll talk about strategies that we're using to further accelerate this growth over time, because while we are proud of an eight percentage point increase, we can all honestly acknowledge that there's still significant room for growth, clearly. We want to be far above the state average, and we're not there yet in most, in most instances, although fifth grade showed enormous growth over time. So when we get to the conclusion of this and talk about strategies, I think we'll be thinking back to the opportunity that this board took advantage of last year to bring back key staff members to work specifically, while, of course, intended to work and support all students, work specifically with students who are approaching proficiency. And so, I call that out just because we're, I think we're always trying to straddle the line and balance two competing things. One is the year-to-year push to get over the proficiency bar, balancing that with the tension of growth over time. And so, I, the way that I talk to staff about that is playing the long game and playing the short game. And the short game is that some students are proficient-ready this year, that are that close or already over the bar for proficiency. And our goal is to push kids over that bar this year. And some kids are along, playing the long game, that over the course of multiple years, we're growing, 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 and then boom, at some point, they move over that proficiency bar. And maybe that's here and there in Oakland, or maybe that's in middle school, right? Because some kids have a different trajectory towards state-level rigorous abilities to assess rigorous state-level assessments. And so, both of those outcomes are important. This is a report that's asking us to tell you about proficiency. But I think it's equally important to highlight kind of what's going on more quietly behind the scenes that will one day show up in the data.
When you started on your fingers, I was like, just come on.
Can I just add that I think it's also important to remember that third graders and fifth graders are different developmentally, and who's going to learn and what they can take in? I mean, it kind of goes along with what you're saying, but to, to judge and to expect them to take a computerized test in third grade versus fifth grade is different than, it's just different.
You bet along those lines, it's different for all third graders. So if you look at the state average gap, it's just, you ought to be cognizant of that, because then it would be, yes, to your point, kids will become more apt in taking these tests, but the, it should be somewhat congruent, like, you know what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying, but also, we're only looking at what the state average is this year. We're not looking at the state average last year to see if there's a difference there, too. So I just think it's important to remember that kids in third grade are different than kids in fifth grade. That's all.
Last question, are we looking at class size? Like, third grade versus fourth grade? Because I think there's some big differentiators there, right? We do have...
Third graders and our fourth graders, third grade last year, fourth grade this year are largest class.
The third grade, last year, current fourth graders are the large, and that's 20...
There's 44.
21, approximately, per class.
Yeah.
And with such a small school, it doesn't take much for the scores to go down. You have one kid who's, has a bad day, and it tanks the average completely.
To that, to that point, and I shared this with Jen last summer after the data came out, I believe, and I'll, I'm doing this a bit from memory, and I'll check my math when I sit down, but I believe on the ELA side, we're talking about a difference of nine students from the year prior to this year. And so, we see a big, a big swing like this in the data, and it can cause us to say, what do we miss? What are we doing wrong? What do we need to do differently, et cetera? And of course, anytime we see a decline in data, we should be reflective and thoughtful and make appropriate plans. I did encourage Jen and her team to stay the course, that a difference of nine students doesn't mean that something's not working. It means that, that there is a subtle difference in the outcomes from one year to another. And so, I do think, I'm not sure who said that, but it caught my attention, just to name that in a small school like this, and on the Collingwood side, we see the same thing, you know, a swing of 12 or 13 percentage points at one building was four, a difference of four kids. And again, while four kids and nine kids matter significantly, and we know who those kids are, I do caution us to stay steady and keep the, you know, keep consistent with what we know, or, you know, research-based best practices. And so, I do think that's really an, an important thing to call out in all of this.
Thank you. I think I'm on the correct si- slide, yes. NJSLA, the disaggregation. Again, non-reportable numbers for Hispanic and Black students. White students in mathematics, 39.4% of the students met and exceeded proficiency. In fourth grade, 34.8%, and in fifth grade, 56.3%. That represents a 9.4% increase, a 2.8% increase, and a 17.3% increase respectfully, respectively. The disaggregation by economic status, and we just have two more to go. We have our third, fourth, and fifth grade data here. Third grade, 20% and 40%, economically disadvantaged and not disadvantaged. Fourth grade, 10% and 31.8%. And fifth grade, 33.3% and 62.1%. This year was the first year, last year, we weren't able to count the third grade students, so we have the 20% there. And then, there was an increase of 7% baked into that 40% for third graders, that was a 7% increase for that grade level. And then, fifth grade highlights economically disadvantaged students, there was an increase by 13.3%. And non-economically disadvantaged students, there was an increase by 20.1% in mathematics. And the last set of disaggregated data is by IEP status. Again, we do not have reportable numbers due to suppression. Our students who do not have IEPs, in third grade, 35.5% of the students tested, met or exceeded proficiency. 33.3% in fourth grade, and 55.9% in fifth grade. In third grade, that was a 5.5% increase. And in fifth grade, that was a 12.9% increase. Again, celebrating those fifth graders in math last year. We've had a bit of a conversation throughout this evening, and it actually worked out well. I mean, that's what this is supposed to be, an opportunity to have conversation with the board, to wrestle with things, to hold the district accountable. I do have the district priorities here to share. And if there are further questions or conversations, just feedback. We can have those conversations and continue them. So there are two slides, district priorities and school improvement strategies. So as they are listed, of course, provide high-quality, engaging, and differentiated instruction. We, Meredith, I think, talked about bringing back, or maybe it was Dr. McDowell, bringing back a particular set of teachers who are able to work with small group throughout the district. We do have tier one and tier two in the classrooms as the expectation. So when we're talking about differentiation, data meetings have already started to transpire this year. That looks like the MTSS coaches and the acronym, wait, I know it. LAT, learning acceleration teachers individually have met with each of the teachers, looking at the bubble students, looking at the students who are not meeting proficiency, and having an individual plan for that student. It is a holistic approach. We're talking socio-emotional learning as well as the content area. So that is for our tier-three students, so they will receive sort of two layers of differentiation. I know we're relying heavily on the MAP assessment, and there's been confirmation that that was a good indicator of how the students perform. So knowing the information is one thing, and then you can act upon it. That's just, you know, that's not even half of what it is, but at least you know where the students are starting this year. Students did take and complete the math assess, the MAP assessment earlier this month. So the teachers have that data. During the first in-service, full day in-service, the teachers spent a majority of their day looking at data, creating plans for their students, creating and building professional development plans for themselves. So my understanding is they are ahead with the process and really appreciated that time in October to grapple with the data of their current students, comparing NJSLA to MAP this year and to DIBELS. That folds into number two with the multi-tiered system of support, improving data literacy, again, in professional learning communities. Teachers have that dedicated time, two to three times a week, to specifically talk about data. Increasing the effectiveness and quality of professional development. These are all closely entangled and intertwined. State-mandated curriculum shifts, there's a pilot that's happening. So we're looking at, you know, is it, when we're saying, well, what is the difference? What could we do differently? So having a pilot and having the teachers say, hey, I feel like this would be more successful, or this is what I'm seeing, and we'll measure those students as we move forward throughout the year to see if there's a determination with supporting the curriculum through a different change there. Reinforcing school-based supports. I mean, we even had the culture and climate evident this evening with our students, with our inaugural group who received their certificates tonight. Of course, that all fits in, looking at attendance and tardiness. We were actually over here yesterday, meeting with the principal. I'm, every day is almost like blurring together and talking about attendance and tardies and knowing exactly which students are here. Is there anything we can do differently, creating a climate where students know, hey, we miss you when you're not here, supporting families, supporting their mental health, and building capacity for inclusive classrooms. And finally, school improvement strategies, adjusting staff allocations. We already talked about that. Key performance indicators, that's part of the work that was submitted by the principal back on October 1st, reviewed by the superintendent's team, looking at the data, saying, is this a high enough goal for next year? Counting each individual student, reviewing their MAP scores as a part of the continuous improvement guide that the principal keeps with her leadership team and shares. And then a number of times this evening, we've talked about DIBELS, and we've talked about MAP being a research-based normed universal screener. I know we've had conversation and dialogue throughout. This is the formal end of this, you know, state-required presentation, if you will. There are links for access, for understanding your individual ISR, student report, and resources for, this is not applicable here, but NJSLA is collected, connected as well. NJGPA is the graduation proficiency assessment. It's always connected, right? We're always on our, on our way to marching across the stage. Are there further comments, feedback, questions? Thank you for doing it as we went along. And of course, we have Jen and Meredith who can share, as well, of course, as Dr. McDowell.
I would just like to thank you. I know you just got recently onboarded, but, man, you hit the ground running. So I appreciate your dedication and looking forward to working with you more.
Likewise, thank you so much. I appreciate the feedback.
Just a couple of comments. Great conversation about the data and student achievement. You know, one thing I always like to keep in mind too is that this is one data point out of many. So, you know, the district has taken steps to become more data-rich in terms of using the MAP assessment. Correct me if I'm wrong, as well, we started with MAP for math only and have broadened it now to include ELA as well? Is that correct?
We're moving to ELA this year. And it was mid-year last year for math.
Right. And then DIBELS, which, for folks who aren't familiar, assesses early reading skills for phonics. So, you know, moving forward over the course of the year, I know the plan is to present some of that data as well. You know, to give us a chance to really see how our students are growing with these other measures as opposed to just the one biggie at the end of the year. So I'm looking forward to seeing some of that information as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Moving on to item four, committee of the whole. Do we have a motion to move into committee of the whole?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Moving into committee of the whole. Any board member topics that folks wanted to share?
I had one that came up in committees that we could talk about here. Planning a town hall before winter break, which, we're running out of time quickly. And the suggestion from the administration, which I think is a good one, is to start talking about the budget planning. Just pointing out, you know, that was a very big part of the latter part of last year for our board and our community and our school, obviously. And we're seeing that, it sounds like that was a great, the community helped us come to a good decision when it came to resources that were from the district report. So seeing how all these things, it's very cyclical. Just wondering what our next steps can be to start planning that, if everyone's in agreement.
A hundred percent for me. You know, the sooner we can get a date on the calendar, I think, the better for that. We were talking about doing that here in the library?
Yeah.
Or in the cafeteria?
The cafeteria.
I think, I thought we were discussing like, not that significant difference, but because the cafeteria is like a larger space, like maybe doing it in the library would be like a more intimate setting, yeah.
If you grab more public, you can always walk down the hall. I mean, right? Yeah, it's a good point. And, you know, Collingwood has, the Collingwood Board has done this routine now for a couple of years, and they kind of just divvy up who attends each one.
Does the Collingwood Board send maybe like a hyperlink out with the notice? So like, maybe there's a Google sheet? And you could say, like, if you have interest in, just let us know if you would like to attend. If we get 100, yeah, I'd like to come, then maybe we need to, like, we could base where we're locating it, like, off of, like, just a gauge interest.
I haven't been to one of the Collingwood ones, but I believe it is a limited attendance. Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, yeah. Yeah.
So there's, there's also, there's also a certain just amount of general interest in capacity. And so on average, the Collingwood roundtables range from three people to 30, depending on the topic. And so what we found in Collingwood is asking folks to sign up beforehand actually reduced the number of folks that came, opposed to creating a more informal conversational environment. They, they don't want it to look like a board meeting. They wanted it, they want it to be more like community members coming together, talking about key issues that matter. And so some of the events are not in school district spaces. So for example, the senior center, the public library, those are different places, and they have found them to be more favorable than school buildings.
Are we still trying to do that before, you said, the Christmas break? If we can?
Maybe it feels like a next step would be if Rich were to put out a call to who would like to participate from the board? And then, because obviously those individuals would need to be available to pick a date, it sounds like?
Or maybe like the topic would be like those committee members? Like if, you know what I mean?
I mean, I would certainly make myself, I know I'm on my way out, but I would certainly make myself available if you only needed a handful. I mean, I would happily do that, but unless you want those of you who are staying on. I won't take it personally.
No, I think it's great, yeah.
So, but I'd be more than happy to participate in that if we, you know, pick a date in November or whatever, I guess, right?
I think even more importantly, how are we going to get the word out to the community, right? How like, because I mean, we can do all the planning we want and then decide to do this, and then we open the door and we sit here for an hour and a half, twiddle our thumbs. So I don't know how we're going to reach out to the community, what the best way of doing that would be, but...
There's a few channels we have at our disposal. Some can go directly to phones, some can go through social media. And then we can also elicit access and partnership from, from the borough. They have been amenable whenever we needed to share information, using the NICSIL system that they have.
Just, just to go back, I know we talked about this previously, about possibly doing it based on our subcommittees. So would it make sense if we're doing the budget, that it would be the finance committee? And then perhaps, you know, that would set up three town hall meetings for the year? And then those three people would be responsible for manning, yeah?
I think, I think that works. I think if this first one's going to deal with the budget stuff too, I don't know if we can tap Kelly Hinkle as well with, with her South Jersey.
Yeah, we have a meeting, she, she scheduled a meeting for the South Jersey. Was it the 18th or something? So, hold on. I'll tell you. Just so we don't plan it on the same night. I think it's the 18th. Yeah, it's the 18th at 5:30 is the, um, her follow-up.
That's of November, though. I think we were talking about like December for the town hall, maybe? I don't, no? I think...
December's a quick month.
Yeah, they're both quick months. You know, if we did December, I would probably keep it as early as possible. You know, first week or two. Well, I don't want to bump it too close to the holiday. You know, so like if we did, we have board committee meetings on the 9th. That's Borough Council meetings as well. You know, we could do that Thursday, the 11th. Unless we think that's too close to the holiday.
Yeah, I was just arguing that maybe two weeks from now is maybe too soon.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's all.
Is this for the town hall you're talking about?
Yes.
If you don't have it before Thanksgiving, you might as well not have it until January, because you're just not going to get the attendance that they really want.
The other thing with the 11th is, that is a strange week because it's conferences, so...
Gotcha.
When you have a week and a half days, it like throws your whole life apart, if you're me, but...
Yeah, I mean, I think to Bill's point, I mean, I know it would be early and we need to get the word out, but if we could do it before Thanksgiving and feel like we have an effective means of getting the word out, I think that is ideal. I mean, to Bill's point, I kind of agree. If it's, if it's not going to be before Thanksgiving, we might as well do it in January. I mean, I think that's a valid point.
November 20th.
That's a, yeah, November 20th is a Thursday?
Because that gives you three and a half weeks.
It's a regular week of school, so like it's the norm for parents and kids.
And then what did we say the, Kelly's next meeting was?
The 18th.
18th. It would be nice if we could get her or, or, you know, whoever attends to chime in with some of those updates too, right? The 20th, we're going to stick with the building at this point, since we don't, I do agree...
I'll see what's available.
Yeah, okay.
November 20th?
We can, we can see the...
I mean, I think for this first one, I understand, Collingwood's town hall, like, they have how many schools? Right, school buildings, like, how would you pick, right? And they always do the board meetings in the high school cafeteria, like, so to change that scene a little bit. But for us, I, you know, I think it's the Stotts Media Center. We, it's the Stotts Media Center, we should do it here.
Yeah, we also remember now, Oakland now has a senior center as well.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that was a conscious decision on the protocolings, which I believe to do it. I think Dr. McDowell said, you know, not in the school to keep that air of keeping things informal and that kind of thing. They use the library, there's a conference from there, but senior center's a great idea.
Yeah, it's a brilliant idea.
That totally was there too. Common grounds, take over. All right, so we'll shoot for the 20th on that. Todd's on board, if that works for you. And then any reps from the, I'm more than happy to attend, any reps from the Finance Buildings and Grounds Committee that wanted to attend as well? I'll organize some information, get out to the board, and then Dr. McDowell will talk to you about getting the info out to the community.
I'm just a follow-up. And one other thing to do is, one of the board members who's in the room takes notes. And then afterward, they just send an email out, just like you do with committees, to all the board members, so they know like what some of the questions that the community members asked. Everybody kind of knows what's going on.
Just some quick updates on my end. You know, I had the opportunity to attend the school board's workshop last week. It's always a great experience, learn a lot, bring a lot back. So, you know, just to kind of piggyback off of the data presentation and some of the things that came up there, certainly came up multiple times in terms of the workshops that were offered. The MTSS, that multiple-tiered system of supports that we keep talking about, those learning acceleration teachers, there were numerous workshops on that. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion continues to be a hot topic. So we're able to attend some sessions there. And then attendance as well is something that we've talked about as part of our key performance indicators and data review routines, and can be a challenge. But that, again, is not just Oakland or Collingwood that are facing that challenge. So there was quite a few sessions on student attendance and how to support families there as well. So I'll, usually we'll write up some notes and share with the board, so I'll do that at some point over the next week or so, and share some of the presentations as well. Anything else for committee of the whole? All right, do we have a motion to... All right, do we have a motion to adjourn committee of the whole?
Show move.
Moved and seconded. Moving on to future dates and miscellaneous information. Do you want me to cover anything on there? We can just move, all right. Moving on to, uh, routine.
Oh, I should note, sorry, October thirtieth, I don't know if you were gonna know that the trunk or treat's been canceled.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, cause of weather.
Oh, that's right.
Thank you, Ms. Marmian. Moving on to, uh, routine board minutes, uh, we have item six point oh one, approval of, uh, previous minutes. Do we have a motion? Motion and second, all in favor? All right, opposed, motion passes. Moving on to our first public comment section of the evening. This is for items specifically on the agenda. Do we have any public comments?
No public.
No, no public. All right, uh, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening to this packed house. Section eight point zero one is the enrollment report. September twenty twenty four, two seventy three, September twenty twenty five is two seventy two. That report is attached. Eight point zero two and eight point zero four are the school safety drill report and the anti-bullying report, uh, and those are also attached. A few announcements. First, we want to thank, uh, again, Dr. Walker, uh, for giving the presentation of the district, uh, test report. And so lots of bright spots, uh, to be able to celebrate. But we also acknowledge, uh, that there are still academic disparities among various student groups. But we believe that, uh, our school is on the pathway, uh, to successfully begin, uh, continue addressing, meeting kids where they are and growing kids year over year. Um, and so we will be sending that, uh, the test report out to our community this week, uh, with some additional information. And then also next week, we'll be sending out, uh, a more robust, um, now that we have this data, what do we do with it for families? Like we did last year. We believe that it's a partnership. Our staff are working incredibly hard. They can only do so much. And so only by partnering with our families will we be able to overcome, uh, some of these academic hurdles. And so we're looking forward to sending that information out later this week. We would also just like to publicly, uh, thank and acknowledge Kenneth Olson, who is our Oakland student board member, um, in Collingswood. He was sworn in last night, uh, alongside the Collingswood and the Woodland representatives. During their first board report, um, the new leaders, uh, they did a phenomenal job. They shared a summary of the results of a student-developed survey about the distraction-free school initiative. The phone pouches, uh, bathroom policies, uh, staffing concerns, impact on future course offerings. And so we are extremely proud of them and we look forward to them elevating student voice during, uh, board meetings. Uh, and then just giving another shout out to Kenneth, uh, for being the Oakland rep. October is National Principals Month, uh, and so this is a time to celebrate the incredible leaders. And so we would like to publicly thank Ms. Bolden, as well as Ms. Soloway. We have incredible leaders on this campus who shape our school, they support our teachers, and they inspire our students every day. From early mornings to late nights, feeling healthy, not feeling so healthy, they are still here showing up for our kids. Our principals wear many hats, mentor, advocate, problem solver, cheerleader, and visionary. Their dedication creates safe, inclusive, and thriving learning environments. And so, uh, we salute them for their unwavering commitment to education and for being the heart of our school. Last month, or excuse me, uh, last week, uh, during Hispanic Heritage Month, uh, our students presented various aspects of Hispanic culture to a packed, multi-generational crowd. Poetry, history, uh, traditional clothing, rites of passage, music and dance were on full display. Ms. Carlson and the high school orchestra performed a selection of music. And Spanish teachers, uh, Ms. Lurellan and Ms. Mantilla worked with a large team to coordinate a multicultural celebration, both at the high school as well as at the board meeting. Uh, and so we're extremely proud of the tremendous contributions that our students, uh, make to our school community. And special thanks to our phenomenal staff and all the volunteers and sponsors who came out to support. On October twenty third, uh, our German program, uh, had their annual, their twenty-third annual Oktoberfest. And so under the direction of German teacher, Mr. Olers, uh, we had over two hundred and fifty students from, uh, four South Jersey, uh, school districts in attendance. And we were supported by high school parents, uh, helping out, uh, in the kitchen alongside food donations and other sponsors. Live music helped to set the mood. There was dancing, eating, and, uh, and fun in German tradition, with all the proceeds going to help cover some of the expenses, uh, for the, uh, annual exchange program. And so this is a program where German students, as well as other students that are studying, uh, world languages, they do an international travel experience. And so every other year, uh, we take an average of, uh, of two dozen, uh, students, uh, as well as adults and chaperones. And they spend, uh, several weeks, uh, overseas. Normally they go, uh, to, uh, Germany and then generally they go to a surrounding, um, uh, country that is traditionally adjacent to Germany. Last time we had twenty-seven students participate. And so I believe, um, this upcoming summer is the next time within their rotation. And then in op, in, in, in opposite years, we host students coming from Germany. They sent twenty-one students, um, this past year. Uh, and they stay, uh, at, uh, with host families and they're on campus for, uh, two weeks. And so, uh, this is, uh, a continuing, uh, effort. And we're extremely proud and, and thankful to have, uh, one of very few German programs, um, in all of New Jersey. On Saturday, uh, October twenty-fifth, um, one of our alumni, uh, who graduated, uh, this past June and our field hockey team, they hosted an inclusion walk fundraiser at the track in order to benefit Unified Sports and Clubs. And so a dedicated group joined us for, um, meaningful celebration of inclusion and, and traditional community, with all of the donated proceeds going to the unified program at the high school, which includes bowling, kickball, track, and the buddy club. Unified Sports is an inclusive program by, sponsored by Special Olympics that brings together athletes with and without intellectual disabilities on the same teams for training and competition. The program aims to promote social inclusion, break down barriers, and foster friendships through shared sports experiences at levels ranging from elementary all the way through adult age. Teams are comprised of players of similar ages and abilities and creating a unified and supportive environment. And so we would just like to publicly thank all of the volunteers and the organizers of this event, and specifically giving a shout out to our, uh, junior varsity and varsity field hockey team, um, for leading this, this effort. Our Capelli crew, uh, came together, uh, last week in order to, uh, stuff Halloween baskets for the Panther Pantry. They were able to put together twenty-five, uh, packages of treats and goodies, uh, for needy, um, Collingswood and Oakland, uh, families. So thank you to the Capelli crew. Last weekend, the Collingswood Theater, uh, presented their annual high school fall play, Another Evening of Comedy. And so there were three one-act shows performed by talented, uh, high school students. Who Done It, English Made Simple, and The Internet Is Distract, oh, look a kitten. Uh, special thanks to our performing arts staff and all the volunteers that support the showcase, uh, uh, skills of our, of our students in this program. This week, students are participating in the PSAT and SAT and the field test for NJSLA. And so, um, our high school students are not happy right now, but, um, the work that they're doing is going to pay off. And so, um, our students on Monday, they sat, uh, ninth grade sat for the PSAT eight and nine. Tenth and eleventh grade sat for the PSAT, um, and then our twelfth graders and select eleventh graders, uh, sat for the SAT. And so as part of our continued commitment to college and career readiness, we administered this, um, to all students that were, uh, interested in participating. So the program offers the assessment to students at their school during regular school hours, eliminating the need for individual registration, travel, or weekend testing. It removes barriers that often prevent students from participating in this, uh, process. And then it provides a free opportunity for all students, and it is supported by, uh, our school as well as the college board. And so it is the same full-length test. And so for our juniors, it also qualifies, uh, juniors, uh, who score, uh, high enough with national merit, uh, scholarship opportunities. And so we have students that qualify every year, uh, for national merit. Uh, and so we're extremely, um, proud of that. And so, and then one final, uh, piece, and it's connected, and so we're continually thankful. Our middle school students, uh, they run the Panther Pantry. We have Panther Pantry, uh, bins and donation locations at every campus in Collingswood and Oakland. They are, they take, uh, non-perishable items. Uh, we always accept cash, cause cash is king. And all of the proceeds go to needy families in Collingswood, Oakland, and Woodland. And then it, it, it's an ongoing initiative that is led by students and middle school staff. And it's more important than ever, uh, for us to be able to find and offer support when needed. And so with the potential loss of nutritional benefits, uh, potentially coming to, uh, families in November, many families in our area will face significant food insecurity. Approximately seventy thousand families in Camden County are currently receiving nutritional benefits. And so while we don't have the data currently broken down, uh, by our individual boroughs, the county-level statistics underscore the widespread impact that the current federal government shutdown may have on some of our neighbors. And so we are asking, uh, we will be sending out information, um, from Camden County about where families who may have a need can go for nutritional assistance, um, if necessary. There is no shame in needing help and asking for support as part of being a strong and connected community. And that ends my report. Thank you.
All right, moving on to business administrator, board secretary report.
This evening, item nine point zero one is your September monthly budget transfer report. Nine point zero two is your financial statements, uh, your board secretary's report, treasurer's report, and cash flow report. Nine point zero three is the listing of the purchase orders that have been issued so far during the month of October. And in nine point zero four is the listing of the warrants that will be paid tomorrow morning, uh, pending your approval this evening. And that's it.
All right, moving on to item ten, finance buildings and grounds committee. And we are looking to approve items, uh, ten point oh one to ten point ten. That includes, um, ten point oh one is the approval of budget transfers. Ten point oh two and ten point oh three is the approval certifications of no-over expenditures. Ten point oh four is the approval of secretary treasurer reports. Ten point oh five, ten point oh six is the approval, uh, of purchase orders and warrants. Ten point oh seven, we have a tuition contract with the Franklin Township Board of Education. Ten point eight is approval of equipment disposal. And then we have a couple of, uh, youth facilities items as well. Ten point oh nine is for the OMA SAC over thirty basketball, uh, group. And ten point ten is the, uh, OC Panthers basketball. Looking for approval of items, uh, ten point oh one to ten point ten. Uh, do we have a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any, uh, comments or questions?
Oh, yeah, can I just make a comment before I forget it again? I went over the, the checks as I, I always do, and one, one on Nova Tree Service I asked a question about. And it, it was trimming and that's fine, but you guys should know, whoever's gonna be the long-term member here. The Collingswood, or the Oakland Board of Education owns from Kendall Boulevard into Newton, or into, uh, Peters Creek and from fence line on each side. However, while we own that, from the top of the hill in the back, just past the little league fields to Peters Creek is leased to the borough under a ninety-nine-year lease, which has thirty years to go or something. It was done before I got on the board. But just be aware of that, so that if something happens down the hill, that's not our problem. That's the borough's problem. So everybody should be aware of that and remember it henceforth and forevermore.
So that, that's like the playground down there, like when the barrier fell, right?
Yeah, yeah, or where they, they, it goes down the hill from that top of that hill to a creek is not, is leased to the borough. Okay, sorry.
Now, I believe there's a copy of the lease in the sa, old safe or something, like, we do have that stuff.
All right, um, on a roll call.
Mr. DeMarco?
Yes.
Mrs. Fappell?
Yes.
Ms. Love?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. McNolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes, uh, motion passes. Uh, moving on to item eleven, curriculum and personnel committee, Mr. Schaefer.
All righty, good evening, everyone. Uh, so item eleven point oh one, we're looking to approve a couple of field trips, uh, to the, to Independence Hall and the Constitution Center. Item eleven point oh two, we're looking to approve a revised, uh, revised retirement, uh, of Tara Bowersfield. This was originally as a resignation. It's been revised to represent the, um, retirement. So we're just looking for approval on that, effective November first or sooner, should a replacement teacher be hired. Uh, which leads us into eleven point oh three, uh, we're looking to issue a contract to Christopher Gaffney, phys ed teacher. Pro-rated, uh, there his contract, effective December first, uh, or sooner, if released from his current district. Item eleven point oh four, we're looking to approve the following revised permanent subs. You see the couple, uh, subs listed there for this year. Item eleven point oh five, looking to approve a staff tuition reimbursement, uh, for Samantha Kosh, Koche, Kosh? For Samantha. And eleven point oh six, we are looking to approve a travel expense, uh, that was related to professional development. It is there attached for you. So, uh, we are looking for approval on items eleven point oh one through eleven point oh six.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any comments or questions?
Yes, question, uh, eleven oh three, the new physical education teacher. Oakland, as some of you may know, is a K through five school. We're gonna hire a physical education and health teacher who has a master's degree and is on step ten of, of the salary guide. Seems a little excessive to me, you know, the individual, and he's apparently from Cherry Hill. Is that where he's coming from? Or he lives in Cherry Hill? Okay, so the Oakland, uh, Oakland, uh, guide must be higher than, in hiring a teacher who may only have a bachelor's degree and maybe they don't have a step ten position. We're spending sixty-eight thousand dollars that I don't know that we need to spend for that position. Okay, everybody argue with me. Tell me why I'm crazy. So the, the goal. How many applications do we have?
I would have to defer to, to gentlemen. So I, I think that.
Okay, I still think it's a mistake.
I think, and so your opinion is noted. I think that it's important for us to celebrate. Oakland is a, a desirable school district, and so the goal is to get the best, most qualified candidate to be able to service and support our kids. And so having individuals who are tenured coming from other districts, coming to Oakland, is a testament to what we're doing here. And so with the, um, teacher shortage, for us to be able to actually find a master-level teacher, um, for this school, um, is a win. And so we know that, uh, our leadership team here in the building, they're going above and beyond to actively recruit. And so I, I would like to say that we're being, um, uh, mindful of the finances, but when it comes to who's best positioned to support our kids, that's not the, the determining factor when we're making, when we're making staffing decisions. It's in the back of our minds, but that's not a deal breaker.
It's in the back of our minds, but that's not a deal breaker.
Well, I would disagree to some degree with you. Yeah, we want the best we can, but there's also a limitation in what we can spend. One of the school board candidates, I just saw a little blurb on email, I think it was, where finances are one of his big concerns. You know, he thinks it can be done cheaper. He doesn't understand why the taxes go up every year. He's going to be one of your board members. So he's going to take my place when he complains about these things. Yes, we have to get the best teacher we possibly can, but there's also a limitation, guys. We can't just spend money. Now, if we have an opportunity to spend less, we should do that. As I say, we're an elementary school. We're talking physical education and health. Are they important? Yeah, I always, that was always my favorite course in school, not health, physical education. But there are limitations, and I think we have to keep that in mind. We have the golden opportunity to do that now. I think we should take that.
Had we had applicants, maybe we would have.
I'm sorry?
But since, I said, had they had more applicants, maybe they would have. But out of what they had, it sounds like they picked the best choice, and that's what we have to work with. We still want to have good teachers, and we want to, it's still the important required course for the elementary school. Just because it's an elementary school doesn't mean we should give it less importance than the high school.
No, I don't disagree with any of that. How do we advertise? How do we advertise for teachers?
About three or four different websites. NJhire.com, School Jobs. I forget all of them, but there's a, like I said, there's all the education websites.
And Mrs. Schaefer.
Yeah.
We hired all of our academic teachers under step five, and we hired a lot in the summer.
That's the point I was just about to make. I think a lot of the new teachers coming in were like either newer grads or very fresh. So hopefully, this is, yes, it's a higher salary, but you balance it with, you know, some of the newer grads. I would hope this person who's a step 10 will be like a mentor to other newer faculty that we have. And absent having a pay scale in front of me, it's not 68,000 more, 68,000. Is it 10,000 more? Is it 15,000 more?
It's about $10,000.
It's probably less than we're paying right now to Tara, I assume, isn't it?
Substantially less.
So we're paying less, but that doesn't mean we throw money at it. You know, it--
Right, but again, not having a pay scale or a grading scale for compensation in front of me, it's not 68,000 more than what we would be. We need a, we need a P.E. teacher.
Correct.
We need one.
No, it's--
So if it's 10, 15,000 more than, you know, the new grad--
The net cost is significantly less. And I also want us to caution of the nickel and diming quality. And so when we have veterans that have 25 or 30 years that retire, and we replace them with a young person that the ink has just dried on their diploma, there is a savings. And so when it all balances itself out, we're being good stewards of the resources within our community. But we're also going to continue to seek out the best candidate that's available for each and every position, irregardless of whether or not they have a master's degree or whether or not they just graduated.
I don't know that we can say irregardless.
I'm saying irregardless.
No, I know you are, but you don't pay taxes in Oakland. Do I want the best teacher?
It's time to move on.
Yeah, I want the best teacher that I can afford. And I'm not sure that this person is that individual. And as I say, he's coming from Cherry Hill, so our salary scale must be pretty low.
Well, whatever it is, I hope he feels welcome on December 1st.
No, I'm sure he will. All right. On a roll call.
Mr. DeMarco. Mr. DeMarco.
Yes.
Sorry. You didn't get my stare from when you were here or something? I'm like, Mr. DeMarco. Mrs. Fappel.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian.
Yes.
Mr. McMillan.
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Stotts.
Yes, except 11.03 where I vote no.
Mr. Tabey.
Yes. Motion passes. Moving on to item 12, School Community Relations and Policy Committee. Mrs. Marmian.
Hi. Item 12.01 is the Collingswood Board Report. Mr. McMillan.
Dr. McDowell took most of it from me, which is good because I was absent last night. I was under the weather. So they went over the Hispanic Heritage. I talked to Roger earlier today just to get a little sum up. But as Dr. McDowell said, they went over the Hispanic Heritage. They had a little presentation there. Dr. Walker gave the annual testing report. So that's two nights in a row she did that, which is, again, amazing. Student representatives showed up and were sworn in, as Dr. McDowell also said. Student safety and disability report. And other than that, he said it was kind of a standard board meeting. So I apologize for being, yeah, for being absent, but one out of the year, so.
You're allowed. I think the hours that you spend in meetings far exceeds the rest of us. All right, item 12.02 is PTA liaison report. Mrs. Rotondo.
Yes, so the PTA met on October 7th. I thought the turnout was really nice in the, like, it looked like a pretty packed house, a lot of new faces. Ms. Bolden covered the thing that I was most excited about by presenting it. I don't know why it didn't occur to me that with the Hawk Heroes program like launching out, launching up, like, it wouldn't be presented here. I'm like, oh, I can't wait to tell everybody, but it happened. So a lot of emphasis and excitement around that. And it's a little different than we've done student of the month. There's one per grade, and they'll be here. And that was a really, really fun addition to this meeting, and it was really fun to hear about it at the PTA meeting. Reflected on some financials, like the usual stuff, what the Ice Cream Social brought in and where the financials are. There was an update that, at that time, early October, all of the room ambassadors and room helpers were selected and assigned. I gave an update as it pertains to the board seats and encouraged those in the room, similar to how we have in previous meetings, that if they know anyone that would be of interest to, for that person to, I guess, market themselves or come forward if they have questions, that they can bring them to the board. I made them aware that, I think it's three open chairs, and stocks was record-breaking, 16 cases of pound case, pound cake whistled. I think some kids probably needed hand trucks to like leave with them. The week that I was there was also the week of respect, so a lot of theme talk. They talked of the Monster Mash, which I did not attend, but I'm sure was a great time. Trunk or Treat was discussed, but as Therese had shared, that has been canceled due to the weather. The next meeting is, not on the picture, I took a screenshot of. The 4th? Is it November 4th? Yes. The next meeting is November 4th.
Is there going to be a rain check for the trunk or treat, or is it just canceled?
I have not heard. The flyer said canceled.
We really tried. Halloween's Friday. If there weren't enough people available on Monday, Tuesday's election day, Wednesday's, they're not sticking around since the beginning of the law.
Yeah, I just feel sorry for the teachers. I just feel sorry for all of the candy, the teachers' ball and everything.
I know.
Don't cover it up.
We're going to save a lot of the costumes for next year, not this year.
There you go.
They're going to get that out on the road.
Perfect.
Thank you. Item 12.3 is the OMA SAC report. Mr. Tabey.
Thank you. No major updates this month. OMA SAC is partnering with PTO on some events. We have our night events starting. And then, of course, our basketball league was on for use facilities tonight. That's it from OMA SAC.
Question on that, did Red Ribbon Week happen? When is that? Well, all my notes, I didn't want to say because I didn't like want to get called out on this, but all my notes, it says it's now.
Well, we weren't getting the, we didn't get funding from OMA back anymore. It's more the middle school, high school thing. And it falls during our fall festival week. We just focused on fall, and then we had testing this week. So we just kind of kept it very quiet, you know, we put down anything we-- It's still in our curriculum, it's teaching. We just don't--
It's all good. As a parent, I was glad to not have to figure out what my kid had to wear every day, but that's just me. It's usually back-to-back, and I was like, huh. Yeah, no, understood. And the DARE program still happens, and, okay. Item 12.04 is the Oakland Education Foundation. Mr. Schaefer.
There's no update from the last.
Thank you. Item 12.05, policies we have for first reading. We kind of talked on the fly. We'd like to table 2422. Mr. Schaefer brought up a question, and I wasn't able to verify it because we're going to try to, going forward, have any track changes for the first reading on the agenda items so that, we had them for committees, then because it was, you know, it got the thumbs up, of course, that makes sense to change it, but we still haven't had the whole board weigh-in on the changes, so, and we might have had some feedback as well. There were some questions on this one as well. So we'd like to table that, if it's okay, to next month. Aiden, in agreement? Oh, I need a motion. Oh, no, I'm not allowed to say that. Mr. President, would you mind?
And that was for 2422?
2422.
So motion to table 2422.
Second.
Second.
Is this roll call? On a roll call.
Mr. DeMarco.
Yes.
Mrs. Fappel.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian.
Yes.
Mr. McMillan.
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Stotts.
Yes.
Mr. Tabey.
Yes.
Then the other two policies that we're seeking approval for is 5117, the inter-district public school choice policy. This is revised. And then a new policy, 5339.01, student-son protection, very important. Policies, item 12.06, policies for second reading. Our 0143, board member election and appointment revised. 1636.01, notification of promotion, new job and transfer opportunities. This is a new policy. 6111, special education Medicaid Initiative program revised. And 6220, budget preparation revised. Item 12.07 is a regulation, only one reading is required related to previous policies. 6111 are special education Medicaid Initiative program, and 6220 are budget preparation. So we are seeking approval for items 12.05 through 12.07, with the exception of 2422 and 12.05.
Do we have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Just a quick comment I might end in regards to 2422. There were some updates I was able to attend at school boards pertaining to some of this. It was part of the law forum on Thursday afternoon, particularly the piece that pertains to the history of disabled and LGBT persons. So I'll be able to share some updates with the board on that. That was presented by attorneys during that session.
All right, on a roll call.
Mr. DeMarco.
Yes.
Mrs. Fappel.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian.
Yes.
Mr. McMillan.
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Stotts.
Yes.
Mr. Tabey.
Yes. All right, motion passes. Moving on to miscellaneous. We have our HIB reports for this month. None. Do you want me to just read them down? 13.02 is our district professional development plan. 13.03 is our 2025-26 standing orders. And 13.04 is our nursing services plan. Looking for approval of items 13.01 to 13.04. Do we have a motion? Second? Any comments or questions?
Two seconds. Are you ready? Second. I'm sorry. I got to go somewhere.
On a roll call.
I'm in low voice compared to mine. I'm like, what? Mr. DeMarco.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Fappel.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian.
Yes.
Mr. McMillan.
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Stotts.
Yes.
Mr. Tabey.
Yes. Motion passes. Brings us to our final public comment section on any items. I don't think we have any public here with us tonight, so we will move on to item 15, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And motion passes. Good night.
Okay.